Regular meeting number thirty-six will now come to order. Please play for the playing of the national anthem. President Proctor, would you please lead us in prayer?
I would lead this to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic, for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, council is pleased and appreciative to have Pastor Jamar Turner with us this evening to lead us in prayer. Pastor.
Let us pray. Dear kind spirit, spirit of love, justice, life, and freedom, we ask your safety and protection on those that have been called to lead our communities where we work, play, and live. Additionally, help them as leaders to remember they are first servants, that they are responsible for the human good of all, no matter race, religion, sex, or sexual orientation. God, we pray for our city at large during a time of expansion, transition, and growth. Allow us not to forget a call to be humane, decent, and kind. Give our leaders the wisdom and courage to do justice, love mercy, and walk humbly against all pressures, political, spiritual, physical, and emotional, that they are held accountable to one that will hold them accountable. Furthermore, Father, we pray for a spirit of unity despite differences, the ability to work together in harmony, even during honest contention and genuine difference of conviction. Finally, we pray for the agenda set before us. Please allow them to operate in decency and in order, in ways that are pleasing to your justice, equity, and liberation, in the name of he who is just and truth. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Clerk, please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden. Any person who takes any actions to obstruct or interfere with the conduct of tonight's meeting may be charged with disturbing a lawful meeting pursuant to Columbus City Code twenty-three seventeen point twelve. Any person who enters those areas of city council chambers reserved for city officials or invited guests may be charged with criminal trespass pursuant to Columbus City Code twenty-three eleven point twenty-one.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Can I get a motion dispensed with the reading of the journal? Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
This week's communications received by the city clerk's office are listed on the agenda and will be published in the city bulletin. Are there any other communications to be read?
Not this time.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there resolutions from members of council, starting with Councilmember Brown? Councilmember Brown. Councilmember Dorans. Councilmember Favor.
Yes, your, I want to say, yes, your honor, and I think I was going to say that because my former boss, City Attorney Zach Klein, is here, so I'm now like in official mode once again. But I would like to invite Attorney Tim Mangan up to the podium along with his family. So it is my great pleasure to officially commemorate the work of Mr. Mangan and his retirement from the Columbus City Attorney's Office. So just a brief background, so as not to embarrass you too much. But you began your work back in April twentieth of nineteen ninety-eight under the former City Attorney Janet Jackson. And what's interesting is that Tim's career started off as a social worker. And it's interesting because we do a lot of work as attorneys, just being advocates in different avenues. And so it was very interesting for me to learn that that is how you started your career off. And then you transitioned to the Ohio Attorney General's Office, where you were there for sixteen years and held several positions, including Assistant Chief of the Federal Litigation Section, Chief of the Criminal Justice Section, and Principal Attorney of the Criminal Justice Section. Tim started at the Columbus City Attorney's Office on April twentieth under, once again, City Attorney Janet Jackson, and also had the opportunity from two thousand to two thousand two to spearhead the city's Department of Justice litigation team, defending the city and the Division of Police against a lawsuit filed by the DOJ, which was resolved and dismissed. And since then, Tim has handled hundreds of cases and was promoted to the Chief of Litigation Section by former City Attorney Rick Pfeifer in two thousand fifteen. His skill and hard work defending the city over the past twenty-one years has resulted in saving taxpayers hundreds of thousands of dollars. And this afternoon, because of the great work that you have done in and out of the courtroom, you have many fellow colleagues here that are standing in support of you and just want to acknowledge the great work that you have done as a servant to this community. So if everyone from the City Attorney's Office, if you could just stand. It's truly a testament to the work. Attorneys don't get a good rap every now and then. So, you know, I want to absolutely take this opportunity to demonstrate the hard work that our assistant city attorneys do in the city of Columbus. City Attorney Zach Klein.
Thank you, Councilmember Favor, and to Tim and your family. Yeah, y'all can sit down. You know, I inherited an amazing office staffed by very dedicated professional individuals and lawyers from my predecessor, Rick Pfeifer. And one of those people clearly is you, Tim, is someone that, from day one, you know, was always open and nice and polite and insightful and helped me over the past seventeen to nineteen months, however long it's been, nineteen months since I've been the Columbus City Attorney, that you've been there every step of the way, always willing to lend your opinion, be constructive, and be patient. And that's something that I will never forget, and I think speaks volume to the type of individual and person that you are. And as Councilmember Favor indicated, you know, we, it's a hundred-and-fifty-person law firm that we run, and Tim being in charge of the litigation section has literally saved the city in his time here hundreds and hundreds of millions of dollars of exposure that we were able to resolve cases in a fair and amicable way because of Tim's leadership. And I just want his family to know that it is very frequent that Tim talks about you all, which I think also is just goes to show you the type of family man that he is and the stories that we get to hear about vacations of the past. And, you know, with, I have a seven-year-old and a four-year-old, so then he's giving me guidance outside the City Attorney's Office of exactly how you handle the difference between a family trip and a vacation. So I appreciate Tim's tutelage on it in and out of the courtroom. So thank you, Tim. But, look, you are, you are going to be missed, but I brought the, I was intentional in bringing up the fact of your family because it's also well-deserved. And the time that you're now going to be able to spend with them, that is going to be meaningful and wonderful. And the City Attorney's nine-to-five, eight-to-five job is our loss, but it's your family's gain. And we just thank the world of you and wish you the best, and thank you for your service to the city of Columbus.
And with that, I believe we have some special guests who have also joined us. If I can invite the federal judges that have. You know you're a big deal when there's three judges that come to say.
President Harden, members of council, Zach Klein. Speaking as a former council member to all of you, I would be nervous if there were three federal officials speaking at a city council I was a member of. But tonight is not one of those nights. Tim Mangan is very special to us. As you've heard, he's been in the City Attorney's Office for twenty years. All three of us, Judge Watson and Judge Devers, and I see him on a regular basis. We're going to be very sorry to see him leave because he has very much been a great representative of your city and, more importantly, the people of Columbus. He's handled many, many difficult cases. He has always been extremely professional and very responsible to the interests of the city, but also to its citizens. So having said that, it's my honor to give him a plaque from our court honoring him for all of his exemplary service to us. I can tell you, he's tried more jury trials in front of me than any person, so I know him well, I know his skills very well, and he is a wonderful trial lawyer as well as a wonderful friend. So, Tim, we wish you all the best in all the years to come. Congratulations.
Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Yes.
You see how he looked at me when I raised my hand?
I know.
Tim and I go back a long, long way. When we got involved with the Department of Justice lawsuit, it was Tim Mangan, Josh Cox, and Judge Andrea Peoples and myself that were locked in rooms trying to solve that issue. And what struck me throughout all that time was that whenever I sat down with Tim and I would get excited, he would always remind me, be calm, settle down, we're going to figure this out, Director, don't let it get you. And as we went on to other cases, that same patience that Attorney Klein spoke about showed through. We developed a professional relationship and subsequently a personal relationship. I can't say enough about Tim. I would call him in the middle of the night and talk to him about issues. He would always respond, and then sometimes he'd call me back. But the good parts was running into each other outside of here, and I embarrassed him at going to the movies. He didn't know who I was at the time, and I surprised him, and he was like, "Oh, oh, Director, you can't be doing that." I said, "Yes, I can, you're my lawyer." But I have to say undeniably, Tim, you know, I will miss you without question, my friend, and your quality of work is unsurpassed from a litigation standpoint. We litigated a lot of cases. He would come to me and say, "This is what I think we should do, Director, this is how we should handle it." And I always listened, which was disturbing in itself. So to say thank you without question, my friend, for the past twenty years, it's, and I think we're the only ones that ever were able to beat the DOJ. So it speaks highly of the team. So thank you again for your work. We appreciate it. Take care.
Thank you, Councilmember Brown. Seeing that, I would move for passage.
Second.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you. And I'm going to give this to you, but, and turn the floor over to you first, but we can all clap first.
Is it my turn? Okay, thank you. And Director Brown did call me in the middle of the night one time to let me know the Indians were about to lose the World Series to the Cubs. So don't forget that. President Harden, council members, Judge Sargus, Judge Watson, Judge Devers, I want to thank you for all the kind words. I really do appreciate them. It's really nice to hear a lot of nice things about yourself, and it's not even my funeral. So I think it's a nice start. And even better than that, which I'm told I will not be permitted to speak at my own funeral, I'm going to take some, just a few minutes now to talk about, not about myself, but about all the people in my life who have put me here before you today, and that's what I want to do. I don't know if the bell's going to go off or the buzzer. Josh Cox told me there's a trap door here, but anyways, I just want to go through pretty quickly, and all I want to do is express appreciation to people. I have to start with my wife Cathy. We met fifty years ago, and then she was the nicest person I'd ever met in my life. And I'm not sure if I may have been confused, I was young, and perhaps I was thrilled and surprised that a pretty girl would actually talk to me, so I'm not sure what that was all about. As time went on, all of our years together, she has been the most important person, always been there to do everything. I'm not sure who I would be or where I would be without her, to always be there to do the kind and good thing, not just for me, but for everybody in the family and everybody else. So I do have to thank her for those years. And fifty years later, I do believe she still is the nicest person I ever met in my life, and now it's kind of nice because I'm kind of thrilled and surprised to have a nice grandma who's willing to talk to me as well. I just want to go through some of the, I want to thank my, my children, some who are here, some are not able to be here today, and their spouses, and our grandkids who have been a part of everything we've done. I'd like to thank my four brothers and my sister who couldn't be here today, my mother who is long gone, but always, through her example, kept the Mangan kids on track. I have to thank her for that. I do have to thank, thank the three city attorneys I've worked for, Janet Jackson, Rick Pfeifer, and Zach Klein. They've been great leaders to work with, they've always given me opportunities, and it's always been a fun place to work. I've enjoyed every bit of it. I have to also thank all the co-council I've had, people, a lot of people are here, I've always worked on cases with people, colleagues, people, and I have to say, they are the people who are responsible. I give them all the responsibility and all the credit. For the record, I want that to include all the cases we may have lost as well that I attribute to them also. I also want to thank the staff at the City Attorney's Office. I don't really see them as support staff. I think they're part of the team. The place doesn't run without so many people doing the right, doing a good job for everybody. I have to thank them all. All the different department heads I've worked with over the years and personnel, always good people to work with. I have to, especially, I've had, I think, a special relationship with the Division of Police. Perhaps it's because they always made sure we didn't run out of cases, so I've had a good relationship with them. All the individuals I've represented over the years, many, many, I appreciate what they have done, all the city employees, and I really do mean this, when you work here, there are people out there taking care of safety, security, just good people in all ways, good, clean place to work. I do want to say a little bit to Helen and Beverly Lynn, who are always out there in the parking lot, always helping out, among many, many, many other people. I want to thank council, I've worked with council over the years and council staff, the mayor and mayor's staff. I want to thank the judges I've been before over the years, in addition to the twenty years here, sixteen years at the Attorney General's Office. I was always in court a lot, all the judges and courtroom personnel who have, who I've worked with. I especially want to thank the, the federal bar in Columbus because that's where I've been really close. I was also thinking about thanking plaintiff's counsel, but maybe that's not, you know, some of them have been okay over the years, so not all of them. And everyone else who I may have missed, I do want to thank them. Finally, I want to thank the litigation section. The litigation section, I'm very proud of, before I was chief, after I was chief, these are the people who have really done all the work, everything, they've done everything. They have manned the air, they have rammed the ramparts, and they have taken over the airports. I'm sorry, there's something wrong with the teleprompter. The teleprompter's not working, I'm sorry. Sorry about that. But I do want to thank the individuals, Paul Lloyd, Janet Hill Arba Gas, Wes Phillips, who'll be taking over my position and will be doing a lot better than I may have ever done, Andy Miller and Michael Haller, and they have done everything they've been asked to do and have always done it well. My point is, everything that's happened in my career and my life is because of the people who have made me better, or at least tried to make me better. They did the best they could. One last thing, and then I'm going to go, the buzzer hasn't gone off yet. I want everybody to know that I am not leaving until the end of August. So if I see people around the next six weeks, I don't want people behind my back because I can still hear some things. I don't want them saying, "I thought they got rid of that older gentleman, but he still keeps coming around." Please, I'm going to be here, and all I can say is that I intend to be here till August thirtieth, and for people like Furby and Dunbar and people like that, I'm going to tell them, "I'm not done yet, too bad, get over it." Thank you very much.
Who knew attorneys were so funny? And while I have the attention of attorneys in the room, on consent for resolution also today is the acknowledgement of World Day of International Justice. Every year on July seventeenth, World Day for International Justice is observed all around the world. The purpose of the day is to promote international criminal justice and is a way of supporting the work of the International Criminal Court. As home to thousands of refugees from around the world who have experienced conflict and persecution, Columbus is proud to support international justice and hold accountable those who have advanced the world's greatest atrocities. This year, International Justice Day also comes at a time when we are experiencing a humanitarian crisis at our nation's borders. As families flee their home countries seeking adequate food, shelter, and safety, they are being turned away, held in improper conditions, and punished for seeking better alternative lives. Policies of intimidation, violence, and detention are not just, and it is our collective responsibility to do more, to advocate for and protect children and families, not only here, but in the United States and around the world. As we honor this Year's Day of International Justice, I ask that we also pay close attention to the atrocities that are occurring right here in our own backyard. And finally, just want to announce our community hours will be held on Wednesday, July seventeenth, from three-thirty to five PM at New Harvest Urban Cafe located at sixteen seventy-five Arlington Avenue. That is all.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Remy.
Thank you very much, Council President Harden. I have one resolution this evening. I would like to invite Marilyn Mahaffey, the CEO of Saint Stephen's Community House, to the podium as I introduce ordinance number two fifteen X, two thousand and nineteen, to recognize and celebrate the one-hundredth anniversary of Saint Stephen's Community House in the city of Columbus. Saint Stephen's Community House, founded in nineteen nineteen by Bishop James Hartley, is currently located in Columbus's Linden community at fifteen hundred East Seventeenth Avenue and is celebrating its one-hundredth anniversary. The mission of Saint Stephen's Community Houses is to strengthen families by providing one-to-one or small group services, advocacy, family-focused events, and after-school or summer programs to help young adults improve their job readiness skills, emotional and social interactions, academic testing, and work experiences. Saint Stephen's Community House envisions a greater Linden community where every person has the opportunity to experience a satisfying, fulfilling, and peaceful life because he or she possesses ample ability to read, write, feed themselves and their family, and provide themselves and their children with a stable and safe life, living environment, to have the means to continuously contribute to our economy and community. Saint Stephen's Community House is committed to evolving with the needs of the Linden community and providing a peaceful place for families to learn and flourish. Saint Stephen's Community House provides excellent and innovative instruction in a welcoming and peaceful environment in order to strengthen and build families as well as communities. Saint Stephen's Community House has served more than twenty thousand individuals in the Linden community and beyond, and has hundreds of dedicated volunteers and partnerships with seventeen organizations. Columbus City Council is thankful for the impactful work of Saint Stephen's Community House and recognizes the importance of providing residents of Columbus with options on how to empower themselves. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Columbus, that this council does hereby recognize and celebrate the one-hundredth anniversary of Saint Stephen's Community House in the city of Columbus. Marilyn, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much, President Harden, councilmembers. On behalf of Saint Stephen's Board of Trustees, our staff, and our families, we would like to thank you for observing our one-hundredth anniversary with this resolution. We truly appreciate your ongoing support. Your breadth and width makes a world of difference, not only to Saint Stephen's, but to the Linden community. I want to share a story with you that really exemplifies Saint Stephen's purpose, and this story is about a young teen named Sean. Sean is an eighteen-year-old man who's been working in our Food and Nutrition Center this summer. In the past few weeks, Sean had become withdrawn and expressed feelings of hopelessness. Program staff recognized these feelings in these warning signs and met with Sean, where he expressed feelings of suicide. Together, they created a safety plan, which provided Sean with the supports he may need if he was experiencing feelings of harming himself. Sean utilized that plan last Wednesday night at twelve-thirty AM. He called a staff person on his plan and stated he needed help. He wanted to hurt himself, and he had the weapon at hand to do so. Our trained staff person stayed on the phone with Sean until the police arrived and could take him to a mental health facility where he's now receiving help, and our staff person is still in contact with him. Sean is just one of the twenty-four thousand individuals who turns to Saint Stephen's for support and help every year. I've worked at Saint Stephen's for thirty-one years. Eighteen months ago, I was appointed CEO. In my first leadership team meeting, the directors were looking at me for leadership, and I was looking back at them for leadership. And at that moment, I realized we needed each other to ensure Saint Stephen's embraces a culture of excellence, impact, and high productivity. Today, I am very proud to report that all staff have come together and embraced this new culture, as well as the incredible work we've done jointly in the last eighteen months. Our mission is to strengthen families and empower our community, so Linden becomes a community of togetherness with endless opportunities. Opportunities for youth to graduate high school, jobs with sustainable wages, families who are strong and supported, and for older adults to age in place. We embrace our values, living our faith to serve others with dignity, recognizing the inherent values of all people, establishing and maintaining lasting relationships, and seeking long-term stability for our families, our community, and our agency. We are advocates, standing as a voice for the voiceless, committing to the ever-changing needs of our Linden community. We have a legacy to uphold, and how we continue our work may look different in the years to come, but we know for certain we have a mission and vision to guide us. Thank you so much.
Thank you, and thank you to every member of the staff of Saint Stephen's. I think every one of my colleagues has been in Saint Stephen's at one time or another to help with one initiative or another, or certainly for meetings, but we know that you're a beacon of light in the, in the Linden community and very important to the Linden community, and, and certainly thank you for everything. Are there any questions or comments? Councilmember Tysons.
Thank you, Councilmember Remy. Marilyn, I want to say congratulations. A hundred years is a century. And for a nonprofit to be in business for over a hundred years and still standing strong, that is something that we all have to say, congratulations and thank you. The Linden community is certainly a community that, over a hundred years, has been a thriving community, then was a community that needed additional resources, and now we're at a place where there's all focus on Linden. And through all of that, Saint Stephen's has certainly been there to help the residents. So I thank you for stepping up and taking on the leadership reign. I appreciate that you are working with Primary One to provide health services to our community. I appreciate that you have a food bank there to provide food to the community, and that you're, and you're serving individuals from infancy to seniors. And so, again, Saint Stephen's is a beacon in our community and a beacon of hope, and I appreciate that you have still been there. And certainly in the next hundred years, I will not be here, but I will hope that with your leadership and your team, that you'll continue to be that beacon in our community to help families to be able to be, live their best quality of life. Congratulations on your, on your one-hundred years anniversary and look forward to many, many more. Thank you for your service.
Thank you. Councilmember Tyson.
Are there any other questions or comments? Thank you so much. Again, we appreciate all that you do. If there are no questions, further questions or comments, I move for passage.
Please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Adopted. Congratulations.
And that's all I have this evening.
Thank you, Councilmember Remy. Councilmember Tyson.
I do not have a resolution, but I do have an announcement, and it's the farmer's market. Columbus Public Health will be holding its annual summertime farmer's markets starting this month. The market will be held one day a week for three weeks on the front lawn of Columbus Public Health, located at 240 Parsons Avenue. The dates for the markets are July 25th, August 1st, and August 8th, and the markets are on Thursdays from 10 to 1 p.m. The markets provide an opportunity for Ohio farmers to offer fresh fruits and vegetables, providing nutritious food options to residents of the Columbus downtown and east side neighborhoods, areas known for having limited access to grocery stores. Vendors accept the Ohio Direction Card. In addition, the market participates in the Produce Perks Program, which provides a dollar-for-dollar match, up to $20 for the Ohio Directions Card customers who spend their SNAP dollars at the market. A $10 EBT transaction would result in $20 worth of tokens, and tokens can be spent like cash. Vendors also welcome WIC participants who bring their WIC ID in order to pick up vouchers. So again, this is a great opportunity to come out and get some fresh fruits and vegetables and support economic development of our farmers. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson. Finally, I have one resolution, and as I begin to read Resolution 0216, I'd invite Mr. Allen Proctor and anyone else who has come with him from Social Ventures to the podium. Resolution 0216-X-2019 is to recognize and celebrate Social Ventures' position for Prosper 2019. This organization founded in June 2014, and Social Ventures is dedicated to developing a thriving ecosystem that supports social development, social enterprises from initial concept to sustained financial success. Social Ventures supports social entrepreneurs in the Columbus region by providing training, outreach, access to capital, and communication support. Over the past five years, the local social enterprise ecosystem has grown from 18 social enterprises to more than 100, generating over 2,500 jobs, nearly $50 million in payroll, and nearly $80 million in sales. Furthermore, social enterprise is emerging as a major creator of jobs for citizens who may otherwise have been excluded from the economy, including formerly incarcerated residents, recovering addicts, the chronically homeless, and survivors of trafficking. This evening, we have Mr. Proctor, who I am a big fan of, someone who's doing amazing work in supporting the social enterprise arena here in Columbus, ecosystem here in Columbus, and it seems to be thriving in no small part because of your work. I'll turn the microphone over to you, Mr. Proctor.
Thank you very much, Council President Harden. I have with me three members of my board, Jeff Alexander, System Vice President at Ohio Health, Kenny Sykes, owner of the well-known social enterprise Roosevelt Coffee House, and Andrea Applegate, Head of Applegate Talent Strategies and the Chairman of my board. I want to thank you all, members of the council, for recognizing not just our work at Social Ventures, but the remarkable accomplishments of this fast-growing, expanding, mission-driven approach to eliminating the social and economic divide in central Ohio. Social Ventures was formed five years ago to jumpstart growth and acceptance of social enterprise as a source of entrepreneurial innovation. And you've just led, described some of the numbers of what we've accomplished. We've gone, grown by over sixfold in five years. And I just want to reemphasize what Council President Harden said. This sector is a tremendous engine of job creation for the formerly incarcerated, recovering addicts, survivors of trafficking, chronically homeless, and disabled. Last year, we were able to report that they created over 253 additional jobs in one year just for these people. On August 6th, we celebrate five years of their accomplishments of Position to Prosper, to which I invite all of you to attend. At this free event, we'll highlight 11 of these social enterprises that have been leaders in the expansion of the sector, some through growth, some through innovation, some through popularizing mission-driven business, and some through forming expansive partnerships. They are 11 serious businesses by any standard. The 11 saw a 24% increase in revenue last year and employment growth of 49% over three years. Thank you again for recognizing the remarkable expansion of this mission-driven sector and Social Ventures' role in this expansion. We were able to do this only by building collaborations among over 19 organizations and programs and engaging dozens of new supporters of the movement. The growth of this sector represents the Columbus way. By tackling the tough problem of poverty through extensive collaboration, we look forward to connecting more of these remarkable businesses into the city's efforts. Let us help you to make those connections. Meet the players in this collaboration at Position to Prosper August 6th, when we will also release the Fifth Annual State of Social Enterprise in Central Ohio Report. You will be amazed at the energy and dedication you will see in the room. Thank you again for this recognition.
Thank you, Mr. Proctor. Did you say the location?
It's at the Columbus Museum of Art at 5:30 to 8 o'clock in the evening. It's a free event.
All right. Well, thank you so much for what you're doing as Chair of the Small Minority Business Committee. The social enterprise community means so much, not just about jobs, but for the social impact they're having throughout our community, and I am very appreciative of your work. Are there any comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage. Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Adopted. Are there any comments by the elected officials, city attorney, auditor, city treasurer's office? Seeing none, and do I see any, no folks from commissions? Are there any requests by members of council for the removal of an ordinance or a resolution from the dissent portion of the agenda? Seeing none, and we now have a motion to waive reading of titles of 30-day legislation by the city clerk. Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Will the clerk now read to the record the ordinance numbers of 30-day legislation?
Finance Committee ordinance is 1720, 1727, 1827, 1858-2019. Education Committee ordinance 1526-2019. Public Utilities Committee ordinance is 1697, 1704, 1707, 1710, 1712, 1713, 1714, 1718, 1719, 1724, 1725, 1728, 1743, 1744, 1748, 1752, 1753, 1754, 1756, 1760, 1769, 1771, and 1774-2019. Technology Committee ordinance is 1444, 1603, 1877-2019. Public Service and Transportation Committee ordinance is 1746, 1766, 1795, 1841, 1842, 1843, 1874-2019. Criminal Justice and Judiciary Committee ordinance 1199-2019. Economic Development Committee ordinance is 1613, 1614, 1650, 1651, 1700, 1701, 1731, 1732, 1790, 1836, 1837, 1838, 1839, 1936, 1937, 1938, 1993, and 2043-2019. Health and Human Services Committee ordinance 1813-2019. Rules and Reference Committee ordinance 2032-2019. Zoning Committee ordinance is 1747, 1780, 1897, 1912, 1927, 1932, 1939, and 1281-2019.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have a speaker on two different ordinance in the first reading portion of the agenda. Mr. Jonathan Cross. Mr. Cross, welcome back to council. Mr. Cross is speaking on ordinance 1481, which I believe is in the Public Service Committee. 1841, I apologize. Mr. Cross, welcome back to council.
Can the timer start when I begin to speak?
If you begin to speak soon.
I'm just trying to reference the ordinance page number.
I think it is on page... Page 14? Page 13. We're gonna actually ask that the...
I'll begin. Okay. We gotta correct some things. Am I speaking on 1841 right now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Let's reset, please, sir.
Mr. Cross, will you begin your...
I am, but I'm not gonna rush, so please bear with me. Members of council, President Harden, and distinguished guests, my name is Jonathan Michael Cross. I reside at 1583 Cornet Drive, Columbus, Ohio, 43211, and I am President and CEO of Manley and Bright Company, LLC, a local community-centered private corporation specializing in urban and rural agricultural enterprises and grassroots sustainable development. We do not have any issues with any particular congregation. The congregation of Shiloh, no issues. Our only concern, and I'll be brief since the clock started prior to me beginning to speak, we just want to bring it to you all's attention that we are aware, and I will email you all these remarks in their entirety, we're aware that you have latitude in terms of how you implement ordinances and public policy. This goes back to our proposal that we submitted to the Land Bank in September of 2017. So we see that this option of basically gifting a church congregation, city property at zero transfer cost, is an option for you. That's not what we asked for, by the way. We were interested in renting those vacant lots for agricultural purposes and then purchasing them from the city. However, we were obstructed in that process by staff at the Land Bank. They said they were interested in our... They said that they were interested in our proposal, but then they asked us for details of that proposal, and I have all LLCs, four LLCs registered with the state. Not-for-profits have their place, but I'm trying to help create some jobs in South Linden and in the inner-city places that I'm very familiar with. And so, when municipal workers, elected officials, attempt to essentially shake us down for details before they agree to meet with us, then that puts us at a sort of unfair competitive advantage, and so we want to address that, and I yield the balance of my time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cross. Since this is first reading, if there's, if there are specific questions, you said you'll give us the rest of your testimony. We would be happy to get you a written response to back before...
Certainly.
...passage next week.
Thank you very much.
But you can stay here because you are speaking also on 1837, I believe.
Okay, yeah. Okay. Members of council, President Harden and distinguished guests, my name is Jonathan Michael Cross. I reside at 1583 Cornet Drive, Columbus, Ohio, 432249, President and CEO of Manley and Bright Company, LLC, a local community-centered private corporation specializing in urban and rural agricultural enterprises and grassroots sustainable development. We rise this evening to provide some critical reflections pertaining to proposed ordinance 1837-2019. In a meeting of this council during the 2018 calendar year, I recall Department, excuse me, Department of Development Director Steven Shoney indicate in a written statement that long-term tax abatements were no longer necessary here in Columbus. After more than 20 years of gifting millionaires and billionaires with tens of millions of dollars in tax abatements and significantly undermining reliable sources of local revenue, I could not believe that Columbus Democrats had actually developed the public policy acumen and intestinal fortitude to tell these spoiled rich entitled real estate speculators no. However, with the abatement ordinances that are presently on city council's agenda this evening, I knew that the director's words of last year were premature and ultimately too good to be true. Ladies and gentlemen of this council, as a member of Carpenter's Local 200, I can tell you that Pazuti Land LLC is far from being amongst the most ethical developers in our local community. In fact, when it comes to paying undocumented workers under the table and refusing to render payroll taxes, Pazuti is a perennial offender. Yet, when campaign season arrives, you all come to our skilled unions, our skilled trade unions, begging labor for campaign contributions and endorsements, presumably to give corporate criminals like Pazuti millions more in unmerited tax abatements. It is a violation of the public trust and public administration best practices to supply large corporations with long-term tax abatements, particularly during economic good times. However, when you have unscrupulous political mascots making important social policy decisions instead of genuinely ethical public servants, unprincipled wealthy people hoard resources that should be all but exclusively reserved for the everyday hard-working residents of Columbus and central Ohio. Members of council, when you all insist upon furnishing multimillionaires like Pazuti with millions more in ill-advised tax abatements, our city has less revenue to invest in public health, housing, education, the arts, infrastructure, employment, and public safety. Therefore, far from serving as a much-needed economic stimulus, such abatements qualitatively limit equal access to opportunity and produce numerous other quality-of-life challenges for members of our local community. Therefore, since you all refuse to stop violating the local citizens of this city, then independent-minded voters in Columbus must come together and stop you at the polls, namely by electing more responsible representatives of the people's interest to city council like Mr. Joe Motill. Thank you for your urgent attention. In these important regards, I yield the balance of my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cross. And this is for first reading, so these ordinance will be... If there are questions or concerns, we can respond in writing before the next meeting. The following ordinance is... After I find my paper. The following orders are on our agenda as consent action with the city clerk. Please read those.
Resolutions of expression 213-X, 208, and 209-X-2019. Finance Committee ordinance is 1668, 1694, 1717, 1764, 1794, 1807, 1822, 1848, 1851, 1854, 1873, 1884, and 1894-2019. Recreation and Parks Committee ordinance is 1394, 1573, 1574, 1575, 1576, 1577, 1578, 1580, 1581, 1721, 1761, and 1825-2019. Public Safety Committee ordinance is 1249, 1804, 1831, and 1849-2019. Public Utilities Committee ordinance is 1641, 1659, 1702, 1716, 1738, 1742, 1755, and 1809-2019. Technology Committee ordinance is 1243 and 1829-2019. Public Service and Transportation Committee, Resolutions 193-X, 195, and 204-X-2019, and ordinance is 1612, 1632, 1655, 1660, 1671, 1684, 1688, 1696, 1828, 1853, and 1855-2019. Housing Committee ordinance is 1775, 1776, 1814, 1815, 1816, 1817, 1859, 1903, and 1917-2019. Criminal Justice and Judiciary Committee ordinance is 1206 and 1810-2019. Appointments from the mayor's office numbered A0099, 100, 101, 103, 104, 105, 106, 107, 108, 109, 110, 111, 112, 113, 114, 116, 117, and 118-2019.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have one speaker on the consent portion of the agenda. It's Mr. Nathaniel Wilkins. Mr. Wilkins, welcome back to council. Mr. Wilkins is speaking on ordinance 1859, dash 2019.
1612, Arlington Avenue, Mr. Nathaniel George Wilkins. I've just got a couple of questions for urban and housing development for homeownership. I'd just like to know, when you transfer money of 101,000... I'd just like to know, when you transfer money of $101,169.3, I'd just like to know where that money will be going to? And could I get a background on this? What was the money used for 2019? Now, I'm all for this, but I also will request $372,267.9. So this... To understand, I need more clarification on urban and housing development and home ownership and this. What's the timeline? I know that this was slated for 2019. How come it's not slated for 2019 to 2025? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkins. Since you indicated support, I feel comfortable moving forward. But would... Deputy Director, would you get him an answer to the question about money spent in the past? What the allocation is for? Please, and please copy my office. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage. I may have a motion for approval of these items by designated as consent. Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Consent agenda items are passed. We will not proceed with the second reading of 30-day entabled emergency legislation. The first committee to come before council is Finance Committee chaired by President Pro Tem. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Harden. Tonight in Finance, we have ordinance 1749-2019 to authorize the Director of Finance and Management to negotiate and enter into contract for contract energy supply, to waive the competitive bidding provisions of Columbus City Code, Chapter 329, relating to award of contracts through the request for proposals process, to authorize the expenditure of $1 from the general fund, and to declare an emergency. Through this ordinance, the Department of Finance and Management will request proposals from energy suppliers and will negotiate contract terms and conditions with responsive proposals to supply energy to city facilities. This process will allow department staff to compare proposals and terms in order to select the best deal for the city. Based on current market conditions, low prices driven by natural gas generation, it is expected that the city will be able to lock in electricity supply rates that will provide budget savings, starting in 2021. The city is not obligated to purchase power through this process if proposals do not provide savings. A green power component may also be added to the pricing to support the city's sustainability objectives. This ordinance is receiving emergency consideration to allow contract negotiations to begin at the earliest possible date. Waiver legislation is required to allow the Director of Finance and Management to negotiate with multiple suppliers. Director Lombardi, is there anything you can add to add more information about this process?
Sure. Thank you, President Harden, President Pro Tem, Brown, and other members of council. As you had indicated, this is for those city facilities that are on AEP power distribution system. This is not for the power that is purchased for our Division of Power customers. And solicitation allows us to look at pricing options for 12, 18, 24, and 36 months. And RFP process in the city code does not allow a director to negotiate with multiple companies, only the final company that we want to enter into contract with. So the reason why we're waiving is to allow the finance director to negotiate with all companies that have submitted proposal... Excuse me, a proposal so that we can get the best pricing that we can possibly get.
Thank you, Director Lombardi. Other questions from colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Next, I have ordinance 1777-2019 to authorize the Director of Finance and Management to enter into a contract on behalf of the Office of Construction Management with Alfred Incorporated for the construction of a new fire station 16, to authorize and direct the city auditor to appropriate and transfer $9,408,000 from the Special Income Tax Fund to the Safety Geo Bond Fund, to authorize the expenditure of $9,408,000 from the Safety Geo Bond Fund, and to declare an emergency. This ordinance authorizes a contract for the construction of a new 24,698-square-foot fire station, which will replace the existing station located at 1130 Weber Road that was constructed in 1952. The new Fire Station 16 will include additional health, safety measures for first responders. The expected opening is the fourth quarter of 2020. The Office of Construction Management recommended Alfred Incorporated as the lowest responsive and responsible bid. Emergency action is being considered to begin work on the project as early as possible during construction season. Any questions from colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
That's all I have, President Harden.
Thank you, councilmember. The next committee to come before council is the Public Safety Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Mitch Brown. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. At this time, I'd like to ask Fire Chief O'Connor and Battalion Chief Martin to please begin to make their way to the podium. Ordinance 1757-2019 to authorize the Director of Finance and Management Director to issue a purchase order to Knox Associates to waive the competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Code, Chapter 329, for the purchase of the Knox Box home equipment, to authorize the expenditure of $70,644 from the General Government Grant Fund, and to declare an emergency. I ask the chief to come up and... But for two reasons. One, to speak to the issue about a waiver, but to give this committee and give this council an opportunity to see what a home Knox Box really is and the value of it within our community. Chief?
Thank you. Council President Harden, Councilman Pro Tem Brown, members of council, thanks for allowing us to present. What the Knox Box program allows us to do is to meet both commercial and residential customers at the Division of Fire. What will happen now is when a fire alarm, a fire, some type of medical emergency occurs at one of these businesses in an after-hours situation, we would have to literally break into that business, cause them damage that would then have to be incurred if there was an emergency. But many times, it could be for a malfunctioning alarm or something like that. We've done that in a commercial setting. Those commercial businesses do pay for that Knox Box service. We have a secure key that only Division of Fire can operate that has keys to the business inside. So it's a benefit. It gives us quicker access to businesses in an emergency, and it also allows the business owner to have less damage done to their property because it's virtually none, just like opening with a key. The big benefit we have right now is we have just received a grant for 1,400 of these residential Knox Boxes. These residential Knox Boxes will be given out to people of need here in central Ohio. We're coordinating now with the Central Higher Area Agency on Aging, with Columbus Public Health Department, and our own EMS data that shows people who need our services on a more frequent basis. Frequently, they may not be able to get to a door, something like that, and those same damages in a commercial setting could occur in a residential. What this box does is... Chief Martin here has one of the keys. I'll have him demonstrate. What this does is this will literally hang over a door in their house, their front door, their back door. We will have that information in our MDTs that's received in the engines on arrival. When they get there, if that patient is not able to come to the door, we'll be able to access this key, get a key to their house, come in, and then offer them aid. This is a life-saving need for many of these people. It is something that we will own these boxes, and we will basically be loaning them to residents as they need them on an emergency basis. We'll be coordinating with social services agencies. Like I said, the Health Department and other agencies of city agencies where we can provide the best service. So like now, it's just Chief Martin. He's got a key. If he can kind of show you how the whole process works. But it's a very simple thing. It's secure. And then, like I said, we'll still own these boxes. So they'll be recycled. And we receive all 1,400 of these as a grant, which means that there's... Typical cost of these is just under $200 that a resident might have to pay because of that grant. There will be no fees charged to any of the residents for their use.
Quickly, the benefit of this... It sits on the outside of the door. It's mounted to the top of the door, so it's secured. Nobody can take the box or harm it. When we're called, we had 125,000-plus EMS runs. A good portion of those are individuals that cannot answer the door themselves. Sometimes they're the medic alert buttons. And so we get the call from a third party that is not able to make contact with the resident. At these times, we have to make a very quick decision to force a door open or, in this case now, we'll have a key basically to their house. So it'll save a lot of damage, especially when somebody comes home after a power surge and their front door's kicked in. You know, they get upset. But anyway, just a quick turn of the key. This is a very safe vault. That's where the key to the residence would be. This key right here is basically your key to the city. It is in a secure vault in each apparatus. And I have to give a bunch of personal codes and the birth rights to my firstborn to get this key out. So everybody knows who took a key out, when it was used, on what run, where they were. So there's a great form of accountability there. So these keys are not just running around loose for anybody.
This makes us more responsive and makes our residents safer.
Would you speak to the issue about why we're going with Knox as opposed to any other agency?
One of the things we're asking this ordinance is to waive the competitive rulings or bidding rules for the city. And the reason is, is that we need to be able to have one key that our apparatus can carry that functions across all jurisdictions. What we can't have is if a company is covering a different district and they have to have four different keys because there's four separate vendors, it becomes unmanageable. And it also becomes unsafe because then it's just more keys we have to manage, and there's the potential for something. The simpler we can make the process for our members, means the simpler we can make it and safer we can make it for every resident in the city of Columbus.
And for seniors or others who are watching our council meeting this evening, how should I get hold of the Fire Division in order to get information about Knox Boxes?
Typically, these type of people are going to need that can contact us directly through our Office of EMS, our EMS section, or they can contact whatever social service agency they work with. Whether the Central Higher Area Agency on Aging does a lot of work with outreach. The Columbus Public Health Department has a lot of social workers out there. All of these people can make those referrals to us. And then what happens is, is we have a firefighter that has to go out there and meet that person at their house and put this in because we have to install that, unlock the key because we keep the only key that opens this. The resident doesn't have a key to open this box, only we do. So it's not that they're going to put this on and then give it to every handyman or other businessperson that would need to get in, it would only be us. And the one thing I can tell you, we have internal policies, and we will never be using this for unwarranted action. And the fact that this isn't used to search somebody's home or something like this, this is for an emergency situation only, where typically there is a 911 call from either a third party or the resident seeking our assistance.
Are there any questions from my colleagues? Hearing none, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Chief, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Also, at this particular time, I'd like to ask Deputy Chief Woods and Lieutenant Jeffries to please approach the podium. I have ordinance 19462019 to appropriate $52,656.72 within the Public Safety Initiative Subfund for the Department of Public Safety on behalf of the Divisions of Police and Fire to purchase automated external defibrillators and associated training materials and to declare an emergency. Chief, would you speak to the... Chief Woods, good to see you.
Nice to see you.
Could you please speak to the issue, please, sir?
Certainly. Good evening, President Harden and all members of council. Beginning last year, the Division of Police deployed 36 AEDs across our patrol subdivisions. What we were trying to hope to be able to do is to be a bridge between a citizen calling and the Division of Fire. Fire is often very busy, very tied up. So if we can get an AED out there, get an officer that can get to that scene, get it to be a little quicker, we're hoping to get some life-saving techniques to them until fire can get there and advance that with some advanced skills. What we're hoping to do is add 30 more to that. We've identified four precincts across the city that have high incidence of cardiac arrest. So we've got to use these AEDs in that area. We're also going to increase some of our capabilities across the division by training hands-on-only CPR. So we want some mannequins to help provide that training. Lieutenant Jeffrey is heading that effort. He's been very instrumental at the beginning of it and may be able to provide some additional information.
Lieutenant?
Well, yes, sir, yes. So as the chief said, you know, our officers are already out in the field many times. So they're actually... It could be literally in front of a house or a block away. So we feel this would be almost an immediate response, that we could have an officer with a... Train with an AED, be there almost instantaneously. So we think it will help out the city greatly as far as helping individuals in sudden cardiac arrest.
Am I understanding correctly for this council, just last month, we had a situation involving our law enforcement officers who used an AED on a patient, and the patient survived?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
So the objective, again, is bring the care to the patient, not the patient to the care, and that our first responders, in the way of our law enforcement agencies, officers are able to be there. They're not a substitute for our Fire Division by any stretch of the imagination. But certainly, as we have in this city council, an AED right there over to our right, if someone were to have a sudden cardiac arrest, we would be able to use that until such time as our EMS vehicle could respond. Now, we're trying to do the exact same issue with regards to our law enforcement officers in the streets. So, gentlemen, thank you for taking on the additional responsibility. It is appreciated by this council. If there are no further questions, I move for adoption.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Go ahead this evening, sir, thank you.
Thank you. Chair, the next committee to come before council is the Public Utilities Committee. chaired by Councilmember Doran. Councilman, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Harden. I have one piece of legislation this evening. That's ordinance number 1625-2019 to authorize the Finance Management Director to establish a contract with Ecoverse Industries Limited for the purchase of one portable tomal drum screen machine for the Division of Sewer and Drainage, and to authorize an expenditure of $328,048 from the Sewage Operating Fund and to waive competitive bidding provisions. That's the Code, Chapter 329. This equipment will be used by the ComTill facility to screen material out for a higher grade of compost used in the production of ComTill. ComTill is a dark-rich compost that will break up clay, soil, and add valuable organic matter and provide both macro and micronutrients to help retain moisture and help provide decorative mulch. The product is made from residential biosolage from the city of Columbus wastewater treatment plants, yard waste, and wood chips. It's one of the best-kept secrets for improving soil health and growing a greener lawn and garden. We've been producing as a city ComTill for over 25 years, providing tested and proven soil amendments and mulching products. This is just another example of our Department of Public Utilities' commitment to green infrastructure and looking for innovative ways to improve our local environment. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Second. Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you, President Harden. That's all I have this evening.
Thank you, Chair. The next committee to come before council is the Public Service Committee. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Favor. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Harden. Tonight in Public Service and Transportation, we have ordinance number 1492-2019 to amend the 2019 capital improvement budget to authorize the transfer of cash and appropriation within the Streets and Highways Bond Fund, to authorize the Director of Public Service to enter into contract with Decker Construction Company for the State Route 315 at North Broadway, Olentangie River Road, SUP project, to authorize the expenditure of up to $1,163,643.33 from the Streets and Highways Bond Fund for the project and to declare an emergency. This contract includes the installation of a shared-use path, curb, and gutter, storm, sewer, street trees, and street lining along Olentangie River Road from Thomas Lane to McConnell Drive. Concrete sidewalk connections will be made at tie-in points as needed on the project. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. I'd like to invite Mark Rogers with Siemens to the podium. The next ordinance we have is 1669-2019 to amend the 2019 capital improvement budget to appropriate funds within the Smart City Grant Fund and within the Street and Highway Improvement Non-Bond Fund to authorize the Chief Innovation Officer to execute a professional service contract with Siemens relative to Smart Columbus CVE onboard unit system integrator project to authorize the expenditure of up to $1,634,011 from the Streets and Highways Bond Fund, to authorize the expenditure of up to $2,465,989 from the Smart City Grant Fund contingent upon receipt of an executed agreement for sufficient additional U.S. smart city grant funds to authorize the expenditure of up to $1 million from the Street and Highway Improvement Non-Bond Fund and to declare an emergency. This project will allow us to integrate connected vehicles into city's transportation environment by installing technology into vehicles to communicate with the environment and to develop and deploy the CV applications that enable the enhanced safety and mobility features Smart Columbus desires. Smart Columbus will be implementing an effort to incorporate small and minority businesses in the installation of the technology. Director Stevens, the floor is yours.
Great, thank you. President Harden, Chair Favor, members of City Council, as we continue to implement Smart Columbus projects, I am pleased to ask for your support of ordinance number 1669-2019. This will authorize the city to enter into a contract with Siemens to secure and configure specialized wireless communication devices known as dedicated short-range radios. It is show-and-tell night tonight, so we brought some of these devices with us. So you'll see what we're going to be asking our residents to install in their vehicles as well as what we'll be installing in some of the city fleet. The purpose of this Smart Columbus demonstration project is to focus on improving roadway safety. The planned technology has demonstrated ability to reduce incidents related to driver distraction.
The planned technology has demonstrated ability to reduce incidents related to driver distraction. So 19 of the intersections in this area where we're going to be deploying this technology in, in the corridor is Cleveland Avenue, Morse Road, and then back down south through High Street is where we're going to be doing that. So 19 of those intersections will interact with vehicles that are among Morpsey's top 100 vehicle high-crash locations. So from 2014 to 2016, there was almost 3,000 accidents have occurred in these intersections, including 861 injuries and three fatalities. So by putting this connected-vehicle environment in place, we're really focusing on how we're going to improve roadway safety. The other important thing about the work we're doing, and that's why Mark with Siemens is here with us tonight, they have, not only have the technology to put the communication devices and develop the programming needed to work this, but they've also partnered with us to make sure that we're engaging our residents in Linden, we're engaging the small businesses there, to make the, to train them on how to do the installation of these devices, as well as do a workforce development training piece that they're committed to. So Mark, I will hand the floor over to you to give a quick overview of what your commitment that Siemens has for that workforce development, and then we'll answer any questions.
Thank you very much. We're very excited to be here with Smart Columbus. I was in the Linden neighborhood when Secretary Fox came by in 2016 and made the award. We've also been very excited to work with Smart Columbus on reaching out to some of these potential installers in the Linden neighborhood and have spoken with them, and we think it's going to be a really great project and really put Smart Columbus on the map, both for technology and safety. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have, or if they're hard questions, please ask Mike.
We haven't signed the contract yet.
Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Yes, President Harden.
Thank you, Chair Favor. This is a project that I've watched for a couple of years as former chair of Public Service and Transportation when we received the Smart Cities grant, and someone who champions innovation as a taster transportation, I have repeatedly said that, in my humble opinion, the Smart Columbus would be a failure if someone in some community in Columbus does not have, find job opportunities because of it. Well, this is one of those opportunities, one of the projects where we have the opportunity to make sure that someone in some of our neighborhoods find job opportunities because of Smart Columbus. And I've appreciated Siemens' commitment to working with small and minority businesses, specifically in the Linden neighborhood, to hire folks from the community to do these installations. This is high-tech technology, but at the same time, it's technology that a young person in Linden can be trained to input into a car. And so I have made it very clear that that is my expectation for this project, and I'm appreciative that we are here at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, President Harden.
It's a good question.
I'm glad that it will have job opportunities, but tell me exactly what is going to happen with this equipment?
What will the equipment do?
What does it do?
What will it do, the equipment? What's...
You're selling it.
Okay, so if, the piece of equipment to your left there is basically a satellite receiver. So it gets the coordinates of the vehicle on which it's installed. The piece of equipment to your right, it basically takes that information and transmits it to the driver. So the Smart is in the box to the right. Now, there are a number of things this equipment can do for you. I can tell you that one of the things it can do is let you know, for example, that you're approaching an intersection and you're at an unsafe rate for another vehicle that's approaching the intersection. So it's very exciting to me, this is one of the first times in my 31-year career, that I can specifically impact the safety of individuals. This equipment can also let you know that because of the coordinates, because it knows where the vehicles are, it can, it can let the driver know, hey, a vehicle in front of you just slammed on brakes, if you're not paying attention, you need to apply your brakes now. There are several other things that can come into play. This equipment can also talk to the infrastructure around it. So it can let the driver know, hey, you're approaching a signal that's about to be under red, and if you're not paying attention, you need to apply your brakes now. It can work so that emergency vehicles can work with the infrastructure and actually save money for cities in the long run, because they don't have to have a lot of superfluous equipment in the cabinets that exist with the older technology now.
One more question, okay. Just, I'm just trying to be knowledgeable about it, so I'm sorry for asking too many questions. So, so there's certain cars, like newer cars have some of that technology, correct?
Very similar technology. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so this equipment would be for, not the newer cars, or added to newer cars? Just trying to have an understanding, because I know a lot of cars already will let you know a car is in front of you, put your brakes on, traffic's, you know, just all sorts of things that will talk to you.
That's actually a great question. So let me, let me answer it in two different phases, if you will, but I'll try to make it quick out of respect for your time. You can absolutely look at older vehicles, like the work truck that I drive on a daily basis. I don't have that equipment. I could put this kind of equipment in, and it could begin, begin to communicate with other cars that have this equipment and the infrastructure that's sending messages to me. So absolutely, now I can have that type of technology in my older truck. Now, my, my wife's car has, she wanted all the safety features, was my, my directive in her, in her automotive purchase. So she has those safety features. This technology, in my opinion, is better than what you typically see on brand-new vehicles that achieve a similar function. The reason is very frequently those vehicles use cameras and things like this, and this equipment actually uses the geo-coordinates of the vehicle. So it's very specific as to exactly where the car is, and it can't be fooled by light or exposure the way a camera can. I apologize if I went into too much detail.
Are there any additional questions? Can you talk about the pool of volunteers or individuals that are going to participate in this, in this portion of the Smart Columbus initiative?
Yes, thank you. We are engaging community members, and not only are we engaging the small businesses, but we're going out to community forums and making them aware and educating them on what we're asking them to volunteer to do. This isn't to track vehicles, this is so vehicles can get the communications they need to drive safer, whether you're going into a school zone or approaching a pedestrian walkway or a bus stop. So we are, we've got an engagement plan that we're going to be, we've started now with the small businesses. We've identified 100 small businesses in this area that could do the installation, and then we've got an engagement plan to get volunteers in the community to participate in this.
Any additional questions? Seeing none, I would move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have ordinance number 1797-2019, to amend the 2019 capital improvement budget to authorize the transfer of funds within the Development Taxable Bond Fund, to authorize the Director of Public Service to enter into contract modification with OHM Advisors in connection with the miscellaneous economic development confluence Village Public Infrastructure Project, to authorize the expenditure of up to $1 million from the Development Taxable Bond Fund for the project and to declare an emergency. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I would move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance number 1800-2019, to amend the 2019 capital improvement budget to authorize the Chief Innovation Officer to execute a contract with Gudenkauf Corporation relative to Smart Columbus, the SCC Connected Vehicle Environment Project, to authorize the expenditure of up to $2,278,723.49 from the Streets and Highways Bond Fund and to declare an emergency. This contract includes splicing into existing fiber-optic cable, installing messenger wire, fiber-optic cables, and ethernet cables, ethernet switches, and DRSC radios to create a connected-vehicle environment that will serve central Ohio stakeholders for the deployment of testing of vehicle-to-infrastructure communication technologies at 77 traffic signals, excuse me, signals. The limits of the project are Cleveland Avenue from Second Avenue to Morse Road, High Street from Fifth Avenue to Morse Road, and Morse Road from High Street to Steigler Road. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I would move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
And the last piece of legislation is ordinance number 1826-2019, to amend the 2019 capital improvement budget to appropriate funds within the Parking Meter Program Fund, to authorize and direct the city auditor to appropriate and transfer funds from the Special Income Tax Fund to the Streets and Highways Bond Fund, to authorize the Director of Public Service to enter into contract with Strausert Paving Company for resurfacing 2019 Project 3, to authorize the expenditure of up to $4,189,878.78 to pay for the project from the Streets and Highways Bond Fund and from the Parking Meter Program Fund and to declare an emergency. This contract includes repair and resurfacing of 13 streets, city streets, and construction of 49 ADA curb ramps along those streets. Are there any questions from my colleagues? Seeing none, I would move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you, that is all I have.
Thank you, Chair, Favor. The final committee to come before council is the Rules and Reference Committee, which I chair. I have ordinance 2007-2019, to find legally sufficient a petition for a proposed ordinance titled "To Authorize and Direct the City Auditor to Establish an Energy Conservation and Energy Efficiency Fund, a Clean Energy Education and Training Fund, a Minority Business Enterprise Clean Energy Development Fund, and to Transfer $5 Million to Each of These Funds for a Total of $15 Million for the Appropriate Purposes to Establish a Clean Energy Partnership Fund and to Authorize the Expenditure of $42 Million for the Purpose of Funding a Electricity Subsidy Program for Residents of the City of Columbus, to Establish a Transparency and Accountability Reporting Requirement for the City Auditor for All Uses of Funds in Sections 1, 2, 3, and 4, to Waive the Competitive Bidding Provisions of the Columbus City Code and to Declare an Emergency." On June 27, 2019, the City Attorney's Office advised this council that the subject petition complies with Section 42-2 of the City Charter, which sets forth requirements as to form a, form for each petition for a proposal initiated by a citizen. In addition, on June 28, 2019, the Franklin County Board of Elections certified its examination of the part petitions as required by Section 42-9 of the City Charter. The Board of Elections found that the total number of valid signatures exceeds the standard as defined in Section 43 of the Charter. Based on these two facts, this council finds that the petitions have complied with the relevant provisions of the City Charter as stated above, and thus, Section 43-1 of the City Charter requires this council to find that the petition for an initiated ordinance is legally sufficient. Stating legal sufficiency, however, does not formally place this issue on the ballot; that ordinance will come later this month. Furthermore, this ordinance does not illustrate council support or opposition for this position. We are complying with the Charter, our city's constitution. We have one speaker, I believe, on this ordinance. Is that Kathy Cohen Becker? Kathy, welcome to council. Sorry. Kathy, you just, you have three minutes to speak, if you would state your name, your address, and if you represent any organization.
Okay, my name's Kathy Callen Becker, I'm representing Ready For 100 Columbus, address 4275 Whitespruce Lane, Grove City, Ohio 43123. And did you need anything else on that?
I think you've covered it.
Okay, so thank you, President Harden and members of City Council, my name's Kathy Callen Becker. I'm chair of the Ready For 100 Columbus Campaign. Ready For 100 is a campaign by the Sierra Club to ask cities to commit to 100% renewable energy, community-wide. 125 cities so far have made this commitment, including both Cleveland and Cincinnati, and we hope Columbus will soon follow. I'm here to speak on this proposed ordinance, which would put an initiative on the next city election ballot to establish a clean energy partnership fund that would oversee expenditure of $42 million in city taxpayer money to fund an electricity subsidy program for the residents of Columbus. And so I'm not speaking about whether or not to actually put it on the ballot, but I am speaking against this initiative itself. So why would Ready For 100 and the Sierra Club, which are actively working to get Columbus to move towards more energy efficiency and renewable energy, speak in opposition to a fund that calls itself a clean energy fund? And the answer is three words: lack of accountability. Other than the name of this fund, it's unclear who would be deciding what to do with $42 million in taxpayer money, how the funds would be spent, what they would be allocated for, and nothing about this fund is transparent. So it appears that the group behind this initiative is the same group that has tried in the past to put similar initiatives on the state ballot. In 2014, there was an attempted initiative to set aside $13 billion in state money to create an Ohio Energy Initiative Commission, but as in this case, there was no accountability or transparency as to how the funds would be spent. And so at that time, due to the lack of accountability, a wide range of environmental groups, including the Sierra Club, opposed that initiative, and this initiative looks to be very similar just on the city level. So Ready For 100 absolutely thinks that Columbus should commit to transitioning to 100% renewable energy as soon as possible. The science says that we must get to, we must cut carbon emissions in half by 2030 and to zero by 2050 if we are to have an inhabitable planet. Cities are responsible for 75% of carbon emissions, and Columbus is the 14th-largest city in the country, so what we do on this matters. But we also must move forward in a transparent and equitable manner. So other cities that have made this commitment, Atlanta engaged with 3,500 residents, experts and community leaders. Cincinnati held 30 public meetings and gathered 1,400 recommendations from the community. Requiring the city set aside $42 million in taxpayer money to put into a fund that neither the city nor its residents have control over is the opposite of public engagement and transparency. So my time's almost up. The last thing I just wanted to add is that if Columbus is to put, if we were to put a worthwhile initiative on the ballot, what we would like to see is an initiative for aggregation in Columbus, such as recently passed in Worthington, it passed in Worthington by 75%. They now are contracted for 100% renewable energy through an aggregation program, and we would like to see a similar program in Columbus. And I can take any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Becker. Do any of my colleagues have any questions from Ms. Cohen Becker? Thank you for your advocacy, and thank you for speaking this evening.
Thank you.
Are there any questions or comments on this ordinance or resolution? If seeing none, may I get a, I move for passage, is there a second? Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Seeing no further business to come before council, may I have a motion for adjournment? And, and it's been seconded? Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Meeting is adjourned. We will have zoning momentarily. Regular meeting number 37 will now come to order. May the clerk please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Could get a motion dispensed with the reading. Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Will now go to the zoning committee. Councilmember Tyson chairs that committee, all members serve on that committee. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Before beginning the zoning agenda, I'll briefly explain the rules of council as pretending to speaking before council on zonings and variances. We permit three speakers on each side, three proponents and three opponents, and we ask that they limit their remarks to three minutes on each side, and we provide an opportunity for rebuttal from the applicant. On the advice of the City Attorney's Office, we ask that anyone here this evening who wishes to speak either for or against a council variance, including staff, please stand, raise your right hand, and be sworn in. I wish to tell the truth and nothing but the truth, and please answer, I will.
I will.
Thank you. The first ordinance is...
The first ordinance is 1765-2019 to rezone 5091 East Walnut Street, being 153.7 acres located on the south side of East Walnut Street, 160 feet east of Lee Road from our rural district to PUD 6, planned unit development district. The applicant is Seminello's Incorporated, care of attorney Laura McGregor. Proposed use is single and multi-unit residential development. The city department's recommendation is approval. The Rocky Fork Black Accord implementation panel's recommendation is approval, five to zero. If there are no questions or comments from my council colleagues, I first move to waive second reading.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you, and now I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. The next ordinance is 1806-2019 to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 33, 33.04 permitted uses, uses in the ARO Apartment Office District of the Columbus City Codes for the property located at 760 East Main Street, to permit a beauty salon, a day spa, and a single-unit dwelling in the ARO Apartment Office District, and to repeal ordinance number 1192-02 passed July the 29th of 2002. The applicant is A. Robert Hutchins. The proposed use is a single-unit dwelling. The city department's recommendation is approval, and the Near East Air Commission's recommendation is approval, 13 to zero. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I first move to waive second reading.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you, and now I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you very much. The next ordinance is 1832-2019 to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 33, 32.029 SR Suburban Residential, 33, 32.29 Height District, and 33, 53.05 D4 C2 District Development Limitations of the Columbus City Codes for property located at 4171 Dresden Street, to permit a monopole telecommunications antenna with reduced development standards in the SR Suburban Residential District, and to declare an, an emergency. The applicant is St. Francis DeSelles High School and care of attorney David Hodge. The proposed use is a monopole telecommunications antenna. The city department's recommendation is approval, and the Northland Community Council's recommendation is approval. I'm going to now, as we have a speaker on this ordinance, I'm going to ask for a staff presentation.
Good evening, and sorry for the technical difficulties with the PowerPoint this evening. This will, this request will permit a construction of a 120-foot-high monopole telecommunications antenna on the site of a school facility in the SR Suburban Residential District. A variance is necessary because the monopole telecommunications antenna is not permitted within this residential district, and the request includes variances to increase the height and reduce the setback requirements. This site is within the planning area of the Northland 1 Plan, which recommends low-to-medium density residential uses in this location. While the plan does not address monopole antennas, it does recommend appropriate landscaping and buffering consistent with its surroundings. The proposed monopole and associated variances can be supported as the mechanical equipment is located on the interior of the school site and appropriately screened. Several institutional uses have incorporated monopoles into their developments within their facilities with no adverse effects on the surrounding uses. Therefore, staff recommends approval of this request, and I would be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't see attorney David Hodge in council. Oh, David, oh, I'm sorry, it's not David, but with the attorney for this project, please come to the podium, state your name and who you represent.
Hello, Eric Zarman from Underhill and Hodge. Thank you, Chair Tyson, President Harden, members of council. Sorry, David had a conflict tonight, so I'll do my best instead.
Okay.
The, this pole's interesting for two reasons. There's a big need right now for new service area in this particular part of the city, and there were not too many, our client went around and tried to find many other options in the C4 district, and none were possible to get this pole, so that's why we're asking for a council variance on this residential lot. And another interesting part is that this pole will serve a dual purpose. St. Francis recently purchased this property on the east side of its lot, and this pole will have a second use to provide lighting for an expanded athletic facility and concession stand and parking lot. So it'll appear a lot like a light pole and serve that same purpose.
All right, thank you. I have one speaker that is against this ordinance, and it is Mr. Jonathan Cross. Please state your name and who you represent, and you're speaking on ordinance 1832.
Okay, my name is Jonathan Michael Cross. I reside at 1583 Coronet Drive, Columbus, Ohio 43224, actually in the same zip code as the proposed ordinance. I represent Manley and Bright Company LLC. I'm the president and CEO of that organization. I live probably less than two miles, maybe a mile and a half, away from the proposed site. There needs to be some increased coverage in that area because there is a dead zone when you're going like northbound on Carl Road and you're about to turn left on Cook Road headed towards I-71. However, my reason for opposing the, the ordinance is, is twofold. First of all, I would say, in light of the pedophilia scandal within the Catholic Church, they should pay for this, this pole, this, this monopole, this cellular tower. They have the money. That's the first thing. The second thing is that the telecommunications industry is interested in introducing 5G networks all over the United States. So presumably, if that pole is approved, within a matter of years, less than 10 years, it will be converted over to 5G. What you all absolutely need to do is educate yourselves on 5G technology and listen to the experts, not the lobbyists who work for the telecommunications industry. Because if you listen to the scientists and the doctors and the experts, they will tell you that 5G technology is dangerous, it can be weaponized, it can be used for crowd control, it can increase the, the chances of people developing cancer, brain tumors, aneurysms, all kind of other physiological abnormalities. That's what's coming down the pike. The biggest problem with local city government in Columbus is the historic lack of foresight when it comes to public planning. But that is your responsibility as elected officials to operate with that foresight. Everybody who comes to you asking for ordinances and variances and tax abatements, they're already wealthy. They are not the working-class people that you all have been elected to represent. So what we're asking for is for you all to hold the corporations accountable, because that's your role as elected officials. You're the buffer between the people and these rogue corporations, and America has a lot bigger problems than merely Donald Trump. I'm here to tell you. So those are my issues related to this ordinance, and I hope maybe we can have some more dialogue about, about it as time goes forward, but it is a public health concern. And so we need to make some of these issues nonpartisan, like fracking of our, of our ground that pollutes the, the water supply, glyphosate roundup, and this 5G technology that's coming. It's all harmful to public health. It's not a partisan issue. Thank you for your, your time, and I yield the balance of my time.
Thank you, Mr. Cross.
Yes, ma'am.
Are there any questions or comments from my council colleagues? And again, the Northland Community Council's recommendation is an approval of 16 to zero. Seeing no questions or comments, I first amend, move to amend to emergency.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Amend it.
Thank you, and now I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you very much. The next ordinance is 1835-2019 to grant a variance from the provisions of Sections 33, 32.037 R2F Residential District Use and 33, 32.19 fronting of the, fronting of the Columbus City Codes for the property located at 366 Zephyr Street, to permit a three-unit dwelling with no frontage on a public street in the R2F Residential District. The applicant is John S. Deruso, care of Dave Perry. The proposed use is a three-unit dwelling. The city department's recommendation is approval, and the Columbus South Side Air Commission's recommendation is approval, 10 to zero. If there are no questions or comments from my colleagues, I first move to waive second reading.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Wait.
Thank you, and now I move for passage.
Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you, that's all I have in the zoning committee this evening.
Thank you, Chair. Seeing no further business to come forward, the zoning committee, may I get a motion to adjourn? Please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
We stand adjourned.